We'll call it to order this September the 11th, 2019. Led by Reverend Charles Adams of the Faith Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, on this day that we now know as a day of remembrance, grant this land that it might be our good heritage for us and for our children and grandchildren. Grant that we remember your generosity and seek your will. Bless our land with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Deliver us from violence, discord, confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Grant that we who come from many places with many different backgrounds may be united under you. Support us in defending our liberties and give those to whom we have entrusted the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that there may be justice and peace in our land. And bless our first responders and our military personnel that they may ensure that peace. When times are prosperous, may we be thankful, and in troubled times, may our trust be in you, for you are a faithful God. We pray it all through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you. Any public comment?
There is no one signed up.
Okay. This one is gonna be quick. Takes us to the consent agenda items today that need to be considered and approved on the consent agenda or the meeting minutes for September the 4th, 2019, and tax change orders in the amount of minus $12,658.92. Would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
Have the motions are second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, we just have one item of business today that will be considered approving the proposal from High Plains Incorporated in the amount of $22,460 for the replacement of three wing walls on an existing box culvert on Finney Road, a quarter mile west of Kentucky Road. David?
Commissioners, this box culvert has been a problem for us for quite some time. If you'll notice in the pictures that are provided in the packet, there's a piece of corrugated metal that is against where one of the wing walls used to stand. So the road bridge department has been nursing this bridge along for quite some time. Due to the magnitude of the floods this year, several of the other walls finally gave out, and we need to get those wing walls replaced and that structure stabilized. We have reached out to High Plains. They do a lot of our concrete work. They have a long history of taking care of these types of projects for the county. They do a really good job. And we're asking that we move forward with their proposal for the $22,460 to repair this structure. This particular box, the water flows to the north. It comes out of the box and very quickly takes a hard right and runs along Finney Road before it turns north and goes again. The creek bank has eroded pretty close to the road. It's another situation similar to Nevada down by the low water crossing where we will take some material and kind of armor that bank to hopefully help withstand future flood events. So that's that part of it county crews will do when we have time. But the bridge work, that is something that we would like, that we really need somebody else to handle for us, and High Plains is the folks that we're recommending.
What will this be paid out of?
Probably the maintenance contract line item where we pay for our chip seal. We have, due to the limited amount of miles this year, there are still funds available in there to handle this sort of thing. In my staff report, I'll talk a little bit more about some issues that we're having that we'll need to dip into those funds as well. But that's where it will be paid from.
Does this remain open at this time, the road?
It does.
And how long and will it be closed when they're working on it?
I'm not sure that they will have to. There may be periods of time where it has to be closed, but being that they're working kind of on the shoulders, I don't anticipate it being through the duration of the repair. I think it'll be kind of piecemeal.
I work in the same, I guess, industry as these guys. Done business with them in the past. I've no reason to think I won't in the future. So I won't vote on it or take part in the conversation.
Any other questions on this?
Hey David, on these smaller culverts, when is it more cost effective to put a tube in, just take them out? Put a big old, big tube in there?
It depends on the amount of water that we're trying to flow through there. We think that there's a fair amount of water that comes through this area, and a box culvert is more appropriate for those situations. When I get to my staff report in a minute, I will share a little bit more about, we've got the Iowa Terrace Tube. It's a 10-foot by 14-foot squash pipe, but it's still made out of corrugated metal. Our engineers are recommending that we replace that with a RCB similar to what we're doing here. Magnitude of the situation. I hate to undersize things or not build the structure that we need in these cases. There are great, you know, perfect times to put those crossroad tubes in, but this isn't one of those locations.
Any more questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve High Plains Incorporated replacing three wing walls on an existing box culvert in the amount of $22,460.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Add a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, that's all the items of business. Take us to staff reports, Ben. You're already warmed up. David, you just want to go ahead?
Sure. Okay, so Vance Brothers had a change in their schedule. So they, we have the chip seal project underway right now. With any luck, they will finish by the end of this week or possibly the first of next week. So that's underway, and I've driven several of those roads, and it looks like it's, like they're doing a really good job. Out ahead of that, we had our crews doing some blade patching on a number of locations on Idaho and John Brown. There were some spots that we filled in some wheel rods and some potholes that needed to be fixed to a little better degree. So our guys, I think they did a really good job. Blade patching is kind of a, you know, we don't have the equipment that Akilo does with the laydown machine and those sorts of things. So when we do a blade patch, we're actually putting the material on the road, and then we use a motor grader to smooth it out. It's very tricky. You have to get, you have to time it just right, or you end up with a mess. The roads that I've driven, that our folks did, I think are outstanding. I think that I'm just gonna be fairly happy with that. Fixing the wheel rods that tend to hold water is a big deal also. And so we were able to take care of those. We added about a, I'm not sure if it was a full mile, but roughly a half mile of LaBette Road between Kentucky and Indiana, down in the bottoms. There was a stretch of road that we had chip sealed not too long ago, but it was really holding water. In fact, one of our folks saw somebody hydroplane on that a few weeks ago. And so we included it in our blade patching, so we patched over it. And then since it was just chip sealed, we went ahead and chip sealed over it also. So we've added to the scope of our project, but we felt like it was the right thing to do in this particular case. So we'll keep an eye on that. I'm hoping that we're not done with the blade patching. There's Rock Creek Road from, what is it, Ohio Terrace, I think it is, in Durantul. There's a number of spots on there that we would like to take care of. So I'm hoping that we still have time to do some of that this year. And so we're looking at those things. But the good news is, chip seal's almost done.
Did Richmond get their street ready?
I believe so. I believe so. I haven't checked on that specifically, but I know that we've been in contact with them. And Vance Brothers was visiting with Kilo, who was doing the work for Richmond. So I'm pretty sure that those things happened.
Are they doing Princeton now at this time, too?
They are going to. My understanding is that they're gonna do Princeton. I'm not sure that they're there yet. They've got another project that they need to go and take care of, and then they'll come back. And I think they'll take care of Princeton that week. So maybe next week or the week after, they'll be working at Princeton. The Fuel Island, we've been dealing with that for almost a year now. We have, we met with a contractor on Hoeydale on Friday. And this week, we have filled in the area where we had some, where the piping was and the spill was. We have leveled that out and created a pad site. Hoeydale will be coming in in the next week or so to, well, maybe even this week, to pour the slab for the new above-ground storage tanks. And then, once the pad is set, it's got a cure for a week or so before we set the tanks, and then they'll start doing all the piping and plumbing and electrical work associated with that. If weather cooperates, we should be back up and running, hopefully by the, no later than the second week in October, which makes it almost a year to the day that it went down. So it's taken us a while, but I think at the end of the day, we've got, we're gonna have a Fuel Island that's gonna serve us well into the future without any, without any issues. The folks, the subcontractor with KDHE, Knightly Environmental, they've submitted their initial, their work plan to KDHE. We just got the copy of that paperwork this week. It involves setting some monitoring wells around. And as soon as KDHE signs off on that, Knightly will be coming and putting the monitoring wells in. We have been assured by our contractor, by the environmental group and by KDHE that if we move forward with setting these tanks and doing this work, that it's not gonna interfere with anything that KDHE requires as far as cleanup or monitoring things, so we're in shape there. Work on US 59 and Kingman Road. There, if you've been down that road, you see that there's equipment out. They're doing some grading. City just ran, in fact, they're working on it yesterday. They ran a water line from the north side of Kingman Road to the south side and set a new meter for Mr. Fogel's small building there, that business that operates out of there. So as soon as that's done, Ham will start working and prepping the storm sewer and concrete work to tie Kingman Road, where we left off with the Kingman Road project. They'll start moving that, building that to the east, and then hope to have some asphalt laid here before too long as well. So the contractors seem, you know, they need the rain to hold off to help speed this along, but they feel like they're in a good spot and things are going fairly smoothly, construction project-wise. So I feel good about that. I was out at the Pawnee Road Bridge yesterday. I didn't get a chance to speak with the inspectors, but it appeared that they were, they were off and running also, so things should be, should be in good shape there. Idaho Road Bridge, we have started backfilling that. We're doing it, if you recall, we put Flovable Fill, which is a concrete mixture down underneath the abutments to tie in over the bottom of the abutment to fill those voids. And now we have started coming up with material, compacting that as we go in six-inch lifts as we come up, so that hopefully we avoid any settling issues. And so we're working on that as time allows. So I don't have a timetable as to when that is gonna be done. I know, so we've taken some calls on it. It's terribly inconvenient for folks to have to travel additional miles to get around, but we want to do this correctly and get it built so that hopefully we don't have to deal with this bridge for years to come. So it's a slow process, but again, we're working on it. The roads, again, we are making improvements. Been driving the roads, meeting with citizens. The roads are better today than they were last week, and which, they're a lot better last week than they were the week before. So we're making progress there. The Iowa Terrace Project, we've got a road closed there. We had a quite large tube culvert that collapsed on us. I had our bridge engineer come out and inspect that and also look at one on Florida Road. We, they sent us a proposal back to design and replace the one on Iowa Terrace. I've got to work with them a little bit to answer a few of their questions on the road structure. But the bottom line is, they are recommending, oh, I forget the size of the structure. I should have brought that with me. But they're recommending that we go with a box culvert of fairly substantial size to be able to handle the conveyance of the water through that area. The total price tag for this is gonna be in the neighborhood of $200,000. I suspect that the one on Florida Road is gonna be of a similar price tag. I'm still working on how are we gonna pay for this. You know, a couple of things come to mind right off the top. The money that we have saved on reducing the amount of chip seal miles, there's still dollars available for that, even though we spent quite a bit of money patching John Brown and a few other roads. There's still a fairly hefty amount of money there. The other funding source, if you recall, a few weeks ago, we applied for the KDOT Off-System Road, or Off-System Bridge Program, and we submitted two bridge applications to hopefully be picked, be selected. We were just notified this week that we were not selected for the 2021 program. KDOT received 96 applications for that program with requesting over $48 million worth of projects. KDOT selected 15 of those projects for the eligible $8 million that they had. And so it was a competitive process. The forms that we submit for these, it's nothing more than you're plugging in basic information. There's not a narrative. There's not an elaborate proposal that they're sifting through. They're looking at apples to apples with all the other applications. You know, how they judge this, it's, you know, they have the bridge standards that, you know, each year, every other year, we have our bridges inspected. They come back with a sufficiency rating. That is part of their evaluation process. But again, when you have 96 applicants for $8 million, you know, there's a lot of us that got left sitting on the sidelines. So we will resubmit those next year and hope to be awarded then. Now, we typically use our federal aid system dollars, the funds that come back to us, to help fund these bridge projects. This year, we received a check of $157,000. So that is one of the ways that I would propose that we help pay for the Iowa Terrace or, and/or Florida Road project is to be able to use those dollars this year for that with the expectations that next year's federal fund dollars would help us pay for any future bridge improvements through the Off-System Road, Off-System Bridge Program. So I think that there's dollars available. I need to get back with our engineers to discuss with them a little more thoroughly about Florida Road. And I need to verify and kind of check again to see where we're gonna be at on our maintenance contract line item to see if we can afford to do these two projects. Both of them, if we upsize the Florida Road Bridge and take care of the Iowa Terrace box culvert, both of those projects will help those areas. I think it's the right thing to do. Anytime that we can afford to improve our infrastructure, I think we should. And so if we do these things, it's anticipated that the next time we have the storms of this magnitude, the damage and the destruction won't be quite as severe if we have larger structures in place that can handle the floor, the flow of water a little more appropriately. So that I would like to bring before you next week in a study session, and then on the agenda for the following, for next Wednesday. That way, we can discuss it more thoroughly on Monday. I am not gonna be here on Wednesday. I have a training opportunity in Manhattan that I would like to take advantage of. And so I'll have somebody here to represent it. But I would like to spend some time with you on Monday, Monday to talk about it. Let's see. And talking about training, we've got a group of our, another group of our blade operators that are gonna be in training tomorrow. We've, I've sent a third of them already to this training class. Another, another third will be going tomorrow. And we will continue to look for additional opportunities for them and the rest of our staff, quite frankly, to improve their skill set and find out, you know, maybe some new ways of looking at things, new ways of doing things. And that's not just for the blade operators or myself, but there's a bridge maintenance class coming up. There's a guardrail maintenance class coming up. Those types of things, I think it's important that we provide opportunities for our staff to hear from somebody else and industry experts. Think that that is all that I've got on my list here.
So how are you paying for all the extra gravel that we've used? I kind of assumed that that was coming out of those extra funds from chip and seal.
So far, because we've had so many rain events, there have been many, many days where we were not able to haul gravel. And so right now, in fact, we just got our August budget numbers. Our rock numbers don't quite match that because our, the way that the bills come in, so I've got a separate spreadsheet that keeps track of that. We're essentially right on budget as far as the amount of gravel that we have purchased this year, which is surprising to me, too, but you have to factor in all of those days that we couldn't, it was just simply too wet to get the heavy rock trucks on the road. So we haven't had as many construction days this year as we have had in normal years. And so we are, and we haven't built as much road. Typically, by this time, every year, we are in the middle or winding up 18 to 20 miles of road reconstruction. That requires a lot of rock. We haven't done that this year. Texas Road is really the only mile that we have totally rebuilt. And so we are right on budget with our rock numbers.
Do you anticipate, though, as the weather gets nicer, that you'll be using more? I mean, I would think, there's so much that needs to be done.
Yeah, but it's so spotty that we are not doing long stretches of that. So I'm anticipating that we're gonna be right at budget, maybe a little above or a little below. But I'm watching the numbers as closely as I can. There were some other projects that I had investigated to use some of the maintenance dollars because I knew this year was, we were gonna do approximately half of what we've done in the years past. I've held off on those projects simply because I felt like something would come up that would require those dollars, and sure enough, we have. So again, I don't know for sure that we'll be able to do both this year, but both Iowa Terrace and Florida, but I'm sure gonna try.
If you don't do one or the other, will you have to shut the road down until you do do them?
No, we, there's, there's, there are repairs that we can do to Florida Road to make that passable. We're not, we're just, in that situation, we'd be kicking the can down the road. We have to do something with Iowa Terrace because that road is shut down. We have no choice there. Florida Road, we do have some options. And I'll be exploring those and hopefully coming back before you on Monday with some suggestions.
Wednesday, he'd be requesting send it to design, I assume?
Yes, I have the contracts from the engineer right now in my possession. They just, the timing of it, they didn't get here until after we had already established the agenda for tonight or today, or I would have had those on today as well. We'll kind of flesh it out in a little more detail on Monday and give you an opportunity to see, and I'll bring some pictures in and give you an opportunity to see that.
Was Kilo out on Rock Creek Road the other day redoing some things that they had done?
Yes. There were a couple of, a couple of minor areas that it looked like it didn't quite take, so they were redoing those areas.
Now, did you mention a while back, if I hear it wrong, that Kilo may be doing the patching, some potholes from Ohio Terrace to Durantul?
We haven't gone down that path. We are trying to do those with our own forces. You know, we're able to buy the material cheaper than we could have them do it. And so right now, it's a dollars and cents thing, and our guys are, have done a good job this year. And I would like to keep doing that if possible. I'm not sure, based on the need to redo this Iowa Terrace Bridge or Box, whether or not we can afford to have a contractor do that long of a stretch again.
Reason why I asked, I was at a Durantul meeting the other night. They'd heard a rumor that somebody was going to go from Ohio Terrace to Durantul fixing.
I've been talking about it.
Okay. Now, the reason why they asked, not so much that, but if you go, there's just a short stretch on the other side of the rails, the trails. on the other side of the rails, the trails, that, that still in the city limits, but yet still are. Their ditches are, and there's a couple of places in that and they wanted to know. You know, and one of them is, we should take serious about it because we lost a truck there a few years ago. Right after you cross over, there's always been a bad spot there on the side. We lost a salt truck a few years ago, turned over on its side because it was, of course, filled with snow and he didn't think anything about it and he ran off and it's really not a pothole. It's just a, a lack of support right there along the edge of that. And it's not, not as much really a pothole as it is just a lack of support for that road right there.
That's still in the city, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's still our surface, they're dead.
You can go over and take a look at it and maybe visit with them about it. Speaking of salt, we finally started taking deliveries on our, on our salt. If you recall, we had quite a large order and so we've, those trucks have started coming in. So we will hopefully be replenished before the snow flies.
From your office, Tim? Just anything else, Sheriff?
A while back, I had mentioned that KLETc was changing things up with their, how they were doing their, the basic training academy classes out there. And just to update us how that's going, we had one person that was supposed to be starting this Monday and then another one that will be starting in a couple of months from now. I happened to be on the phone with KLETc on Thursday and they had just had a cancellation for the class that started Monday. So we were able to move another person into that class. So the person that was going to be waiting a couple of months is actually down there right now as well. And so we currently have three that are going through the law enforcement academy down in Hutch, which is a good thing for, for everyone involved, I believe here. And then I also have two people that are down at the jail training academy down at Hutch as well this week. As you know, the jail training academy is something that was started this year. It's a collaboration between the Sheriff's Association and the National Institute of Jail Operations. And we had the first, that first training academy here in Kansas was on month, was on, excuse me, back in May. And then this week we have the second class going through for this year. And we are working to try to have that academy hosted four times next year instead of just twice a year. That way we'll help facilitate getting a lot more people through that, through that training academy. And so we're expecting to, to see that happen next year. So that's going to help us along quite a bit.
How long is that?
The jail academy is one week. It's one week. They're pretty long days, Monday through Friday, and, but it, it is just a one week, one week academy. And then the, the law enforcement academy is still at 14 weeks.
14 long weeks.
Yeah, 14 long weeks and some of those weeks have night classes as well as the daytime classes. So it's, it's pretty intense while, while they are, while they are there. Last Wednesday night, I did attend the Farm Bureau's Legislative, well, it's usually the farm tour, but it was their banquet, legislative banquet this year. And I just wanted to let you guys know that one of the speakers at that and a couple of commissioners were there. But one of the speakers was Susan Rader from, from Tourism. And I just wanted to commend her on the job that she did presenting Franklin County Tourism to that organization. There were a lot of state officials there and, and so it was good for them to all hear what we have going on. And I, she did a good job and I just wanted to make sure that she was commended for that. And we have the Power of the Pass Tractor Show coming up this weekend. And so we'll be very busy with that. And then the following weekend is a River Run Car Show and be very busy with that as well. We've been having planning meetings with that going on for quite a while. And so it'll be good, those are good events for our community to be, from my aspect, it'll be good to have those behind us again. So that's kind of where we are right now. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Power of the Pass this weekend, good chance we'll have rain this weekend, right?
It's historically, that's kind of the way things have gone, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Right, that takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
Yeah, I, I've been to the Farm Bureau Legislative Dinner the other night. Reiterate, reiterate what Jeff said about Susan Rader doing a presentation, it's very good. And went to the ribbon cutting for Legacy Square. Didn't go to the grand opening because I went to the football game, so that's all I got.
I did the legislative luncheon and that's a good event because it draws legislators from all over, from the national to the state to the county level. You know, you kind of get in your own little world and you think, you know, but it's really a bigger picture when you, when you think about it. And then I did do the ribbon cutting for Legacy Square and then the first Friday Forum. And that was an interesting program where it really gave the history of, of how that all came about. And then I did get a chance to go to the grand opening with Travis Marvin and that was a great event. People all over, from all over the county, you know, and I just said it just brought all kinds of genres of people together and it was a great night and that's all I did.
Went to the Food Policy Council. Their main item of business or main discussion was their mobile food pantry. This is their second month. They had a bar graft, I'll pass that around, kind of shows the volume's really picking up on that program. Went and took a look at the Idaho Road Bridge, the one that washed out David talked about. And guys were out there working and that site definitely has some things that makes it difficult to work. It is at the bottom of a hole. It doesn't look like much when you drive on Idaho and look, but you get down there, there's a lot of watershed that comes to that one point and they've been fighting the water, washing, siltin' in what they get done and that, that wouldn't be a fun place to work. And I, they're doing a good job. They get flowable fill on the south side as well poured. Okay. So they got the north side done and got covered up again with mud. Went to the Friday, the Legacy Square opening event there in the evening. That was, that went well, that was a nice event for sure. And attended a city commission meeting, there's a zoning item was their only, at that meeting, their only item of business. There was a, there's several constituencies in my district that were interested in the outcome of that and went down there just to support the process, I guess, so.
Yeah, I did tend the legislative dinner also and I thought it was very good. And it was, another thing that's nice about it, that's a new facility there in Wellsville they had just put in. It used to be a longtime genie barrier antique store there. And the guy, peoples went in there and turned that into an event center and they did a real nice job of it. And it makes a good place for, not many small towns have those kinds of things that they can use. But I thought it went really well and I thought Susan did a real good job presenting tourism to the public of what the county has to offer and, and where it's going and headed. I did go to Legacy down there, there's ribbon cutting and everything. And what was so funny down there, because they don't need nothing to the business, but everybody's real careful not to get out on the newly sawed up grass. What's the first thing they tell you to do? Get out on the new sawed up grass. Because they want everybody facing in to where the ribbon cutting was, you know. But it, I've already talked to one or two of the business owners down there and they said since the grand opening, they've noticed a definite increase in foot traffic and business down there since it's opened up and that'll probably get better with time, the more people, of course. You have a lot of, a lot of lookers right now because people talking about it. So they're wanting to go down and see it and enjoy it. Went to the Rantle City meeting the other night. Big thing there, main thing is they just finished up their audit. They had audits on, on the city for the last three, three, four years. Only thing they found was a couple of water bills. They questioned how it was done and that's pretty good if you've got a city. And all you have is a couple of water bills that they were concerned about. We did have discussion, I know Chairman Howard a while back brought to us about the Midwest Association Assistance Program that been helping with Richmond and, and Wiesburg. And so I found out that they had helped Fontana, just finished up a program in Fontana in Miami County. So I called the clerk over there just to kind of get some ideas of if I'm going to promote this around here, I want to make sure I get a little bit of how they did. And I talked to Fontana clerk over there and she said they just couldn't do no more than brag about all they did to help the city of Fontana at no charge. Said the only problem was that not enough people to do everything they need to do as fast as they wanted it done. But other than that, it was all done free, gratis and helped them with their budget and a water issue they were having with the city and a water grant. So it sounds like something I want to move forward with. We did discuss, we're working with the health department down there with their putting in new bathrooms at the ballpark. The only holdup is we're trying to get somebody that's ADA engineering, know what they're doing. Different when you're putting in just a building or putting in something that's for public, public use with all the ADA standards. And so they're working on that. We're supposed to get a bid on this week. Pathways, I think that's the main thing we're down to is making sure we got a detailed cost and what needs to be done. Also, one other thing, their city truck was down and, and they had a individual there in town that's a family member, runs a company and has obligingly going to get them a new transmission at a discounted rate. Plus hopefully somebody there in the area is going to install it at no charge for the city. So that's what it takes for a little town to exist is, is for people being able to come forward and doing things like that. So that's all I got.
This organization that Don's talking about, it, it is no charge to the cities. It is all funded by federal monies, so I guess we are all paying for it in the long run. But anyway, it is something that small towns need to look at because they could do them a lot of, lot of good and really help them out, so. And the lady that I listened to talk really was on top of it and knows what she's talking about, it appears, so. Anyway, other than that, I attended Wiesburg's city meeting Monday night. It was a fairly long meeting, typical stuff for a small town. They talked about their streets and ditches and getting some of their ditches redone. Talked about some improvements at City Hall. They do have a public hearing set for September the 26th. They're still looking at trying to chip and seal all their streets in, in Wiesburg. They did a survey and that came back. They think they can qualify for some grant money because of the survey. And they're going to have a public meeting. It's nothing set yet, but I think they said their total bill on that's 700 and some thousand. So they're still looking at some ways that they could fund that and what the grant would help them. So that's, nothing's set yet, but they're still looking into that and seeing if that's going to be an option for them. I've talked about replacing some of their stop signs. The mayor's been talking to David about working with the county, maybe purchasing some through the county to help them out there. They're talking about putting a water filling station in, in town, whether that would be feasible, whether they could be in competition with the one in Homewood, whether that would pay for itself or not. And they appointed Stephen Curtis to wholesale 12 district. Longtime person from Wiesburg, passed away a while back and had an opening and they appointed Stephen Curtis to that spot. And that is pretty much the extent of it. They approved purchasing fuel and authorized to pay the bills and that was all. And that's all I've been to since the last meeting. So.
Where are these two structures at? The, I'm assuming the one on Iowa Terrace is probably just south 68?
No, it is, it's between.
Osborne, Osborne Terrace?
Riley and Shawnee.
Okay. One doesn't connect there. Oh, it does, I'm sorry, right there, all righty. Yeah, my one. Time I'll swing by and look at those sites before we talk about it Monday.
Okay, if nothing else, we have, we will have a study session on Monday, commission meeting next Wednesday. We also have a joint luncheon scheduled for next Wednesday. It will be at USD 290. Has anything else, would look for a motion to adjourn. Have motions or second? Second, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed?